I call to order this regular meeting of the Oberlin City Schools Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White.
Present.
Ms. Gadson.
Here.
Ms. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Stagel.
Here.
Ms. Ameca.
Here. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting. So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded it. Are there any changes to the agenda, questions, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White.
Yes.
Ms. Gadson.
Yes.
Ms. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Ms. Ameca.
Yes. Next, we have citizens' concerns on agenda items. I think Mr. Nemney is checking. Okay, so that would be at the end or towards the end when we have.
Citizens' concerns.
Citizens' concerns in general, not related to the agenda. Okay, thank you. And nothing online, we still have online sign up, right? Okay. All right, so next we have news of note and presentations. Dr. Hall.
Okay, we're supposed to have our track team go tonight to present, but they were unable to present tonight. They'll like to present at the next board meeting. I was notified this morning, we have a lot of activities going on, so they're, I want to reschedule their presentation. Next, some updates that we have. A few updates I'd like to present before we do our district report card. I'd like to have a special thank you to our entire district for making homecoming an excellent event. Our teachers, our staff members, the facility looked great at OHS. Great homecoming activities, the games and all the events that led up for that week. Students had a lot of fun, the bonfire was a great time. Thanks to Chief and the city for assistance with that, and the parade was phenomenal. I'd like to thank everyone who made that happen for us and all our students as well. I'd also like to announce our annual walk and roll to school will be held the morning of Thursday, October 23rd this year. We'll have a moment of silence for our SRO, Billy Needham, since he was instrumental in the success of the event. We will also honor him by renaming the event Oberlin City Schools Annual Officer Billy Needham Walk and Roll to School Day. And I'd like to thank our staff too, as most people I've seen. The district received a 4.5 stars out of five on the state report card. And that initiative was due to the hard work from the teaching, the staff, our consorio staff, everyone from the bottom down working with our students. Avon received a five, Avon Lake and Oberlin both received a 4.5 rating in the county. So we're leading the county as well with our report card rating of 4.5. Great job, hats off to our administrative staff, our teachers, our principals, everyone who worked in the district as well. Thank you for the hard work. Now we have a presentation of our report card. We have, Mrs. Baker will present some information on our report card for us. See if I can get it.
There we go. Good evening, good evening, good evening. So tonight I'll just briefly go over, briefly for me, right? The report card, and we're not going to go like dive into every single section, it'll just have like a slide or two on each section, just as reminders. Last year we went real deep into it. So tonight it's going to be a little bit of like a refresher in some of the areas and just kind of highlighting some things that we need to celebrate and some things that we need to work on. Alrighty there. Get my steps in. Alrighty, so with that, just a reminder of our goals. As we go into the school, I know we've got some strategic meetings coming up soon where we'll, you know, kind of discuss them a little bit more in depth. But just as a reminder here, some of our goals as part of the presentation. By the end of the academic year 2029, 100% of Oberlin City Schools students will achieve grade level proficiency or above in all academic areas and courses, ELA, math, science, and social studies in grades pre-K-12 as measured by state and district assessments. And I know I'm reading them kind of fast because we kind of share them quite a bit, but I just wanted to remind people that we do have our district goals. Our second goal is really supporting our high school students as we move towards college career readiness with CCP, IB, JVS measures, articulated credit. Our third goal is moving our students through their ACTs, SATs, and ASVAB and hoping that 100% of them receive remediation-free scores. That's our goal all 2029. And then the last one is by the end of 2029, Oberlin City Schools students will report experiencing satisfaction or above with Oberlin City Schools' culture, climate, as measured by our annual student surveys. So we give them annual surveys. So we have some of our academics in there, we have our culture and climate. And then it breaks down a little bit more specific into supporting college and career readiness. That's me. I am the clicker. So just as a reminder, there are six areas on our state report card. Those six areas, one is achievement. And I try to give a little tiny but quick historical, it's not the prettiest slide. But 2022, 2023, we had a three. 23, 24, we had a three. The last three years on our report card, we've maintained a three for achievement. And I'll give you a quick glimpse into what areas cover achievement in a moment. Progress, we have moved from a four to a five over the last three years. And that component is talking about, you know, our making progress and growth within our assessments. Our gap closing, we have gone from a four to a five. And then the gap closing component is a measure of reduction in educational gaps for student groups. And those specific student groups are my special education population, our gifted students. We go into our other diverse populations of African-American students, girls versus boys. So that is our gap closing, so we've grown to a five in decreasing the gap. Graduation, that graduation component is what it says, our students who are graduating and prepared. We've moved from a two three years ago to a five. Just keep in mind, when we talk about graduation rate, it is not for the students who graduated this past June. It is for June of 2024. That cohort. And our early literacy, in the last three years, we've moved from a two to a three and then back to a two. And we're going to talk a little bit about what happened. And then college career workforce and military readiness, we talked a little bit, well, we talked quite a bit about this last year, those 11 components, and what it really meant in each section. And this is the first time that we have received a rating in that area. And we're one of the few school districts in this area that actually received a five. And as I speak to other school districts with curriculum directors, I was kind of confused, and they were like, well, how did you all do it? I'm thinking, hmm, what do you mean? But I guess some other districts, this just wasn't something that they concentrated on, they did their norm, and we did. We said, if these are the things that say the students should be college career readiness, then we need to start working on these things. Still have some work to go, so about 90.1% of our students had met one of those 11 areas. And so you go, what happened to the ones that did not? We have students who may have cognitive disabilities that are unable to meet some of those. And then also, you may have a student who just, they could be a straight A student and they didn't want to take an ACT, an SAT, they didn't want to do the credentialing, they didn't want a CCP course. And their parents have said, we are not doing anything beyond that, and they would fall within that as well. And so as Dr. Hall said, we received a 4.5, last year we were a four. The year before that, we were a 3.5. So we're growing up in increments, and for those who aren't aware, the highest score you could earn is a five star. What do we look like in comparison to other districts? You know, sometimes, you know, we don't like to compare, but we kind of do, let's be real. Sometimes we like to show off and say, look what we did. Out of the 15 county districts, and I include Vermillion, even though they're not within Lorain County, we're so close to them and we do so much sometimes with Vermillion, I counted them. I know there's a lot of colors going on, but I'll break it down. Oberlin had the highest growth in our performance index. And performance index is when they take a look at our student test growth, when they're testing. We had a 3.8 in that PI. A lot of times, if you read the newspaper, they talked about it, they ranked our district in numbers, like what number we were. That in the chart on the left, the middle performance index. The reason there are so many numbers, they said this year we ranked number 363 out of 607 school districts. Well, where did they get that from? They got it from what I like to call that middle number, that 78.2, it's the percentage of PI. It's the percentage they did. If you look at the report card last year, they didn't use a percentage, they just said, what was your actual grade for performance index? And that was the 85.9. So for a lot of people that goes, we don't know what you're talking about, my mind needs to see it that way because they gave us two different comparisons. One was compared in a percentage last year, and this year it was an actual year score. But either way, we are 363 out of 607. We had the highest growth in that category for those 15 school districts. And three districts increased their rating, it was Oberlin, Clearview, and Firelands. And only one district remained a five star, Avon Lake, there were two last year, and Avon Lake dropped down to a 4.5. Eight districts, eight district ratings decreased. So just, you know, something that we definitely should be celebrating and praising. We still have a lot of work to do, we're not there. But I think that the work that the staff of Oberlin City Schools and the community has put in is showing. So once again, we still have a lot of work to do, but this is, you know, gratitude to those, as Dr. Hall has said, who is, who are making it happen. When you look at the chart on the right, what I did was, they allow us sometimes to look up in our secure data center similar districts. And those districts could be similar by size, they could be similar by economic disadvantage, and that's not your overall community. It's the student community, population. So sometimes people get confused and they go, no, I know our average, our median income is higher in Oberlin. As a community it might be, but the students, it's based on the students' income and their family's income in the school district. So we kind of looked at some of those that were similar in economic, in the, sorry, the economic disadvantage. So these are some of the districts throughout Ohio that may have some similarities. It may not be by enrollment, it may be by their economics. But that's what we try to track it. Liberty's in there only because once upon a time they were closer to us. But if you look at the adjusted mean gross income, a lot of similarities in those, in that community in reference to how many, much money those families are averaging that go to the school districts. So that would be within the closest districts to us economically for families, where they rated with their report cards. And we're a 4.5, and you can see that a lot of them, but there's a five in there, a lot of them were 2.5s, 3.5s, and fours. So we're doing pretty good. We're pretty much top for other districts that have similar family incomes, median incomes. So let's go into the categories, the six categories. Graduation. The graduation component is made up of two different areas. One is how many of your students are graduating within four years? And those who did not, how many did you get graduated in five years? So any student who was in their fifth year, 100% of them graduated, were good. Those students who are within their fourth year, it's 97.5. So you would go, why would we have a five-year graduate? For instance, we have a student who transferred into the district, and they said, hey, you know what, I want to go out to JVS. But I want to be able to do two years. And because of whatever accommodations or things that we needed to meet, they got a chance to do it in five years. We also have to keep in mind some of our students who are special education students have that opportunity to stay in school until, what is it, they're 21? And so some of them take advantage of that opportunity. And then we may have some students who just transferred to us, were here with us, that needed that fifth year to graduate. Yes?
What do you do about a student who graduates in three years to be a foreign exchange student?
Okay, so we have students who graduate in three years, period, to be here, and some that are foreign exchange. Our foreign exchange, if a student comes from another country as a foreign exchange student, they don't calculate into our graduation data.
No, but I mean somebody.
But our student who leaves, and if they graduate there, if they unenroll with us, they're not our calculations. If they're still our student, then they would need to come back so that we can fulfill their graduation requirements. So they would still be considered a four-year if they, if they fit, if they meet the requirements. If not, and they roll over, they become the four-year still because they, they're kind of graduating early, there's no three-year. You're either four-year or five-year, so you would be calculating to the four.
Once a student starts their district as a freshman, the clocks start ticking for them for a four-year period until another district, if it transfers out to another district, picks them up. Now, for, we have a student that says, suppose they say they're going to Columbus, and they never enrolled, they still own their books.
They're still ours.
So if we have a foreign exchange student that says, you know, hey, I'm going to go overseas, and once another district or another school district pick them up, they get off our books, so we don't have to worry about the four or five-year graduation rate with them. So that's why it's so critical that we have a strong EMIS person because we have to track our freshmen, ensure all our freshmen from ninth grade all the way to 12th grade and track them down. There was students that were in Southern Ohio that we had to track down because they were still on our books. So we had to send, you know, make sure that student was eligible to graduate.
So if they graduate where they are out of the country, then they'll be fine, but if they are still one of our students enrolled, then they would show up on the four-year graduation rate if they do it in four. And these are some of the things that we did, and we talked about last year on intervening to get that graduation rate up, and we've been working on them over the last two years. The targeted home visits, the reaching out like Dr. Hall said, and finding our students who we don't know. They're on our, we had a student who enrolled and never stepped foot on the property. They were still ours, we had to find them. So we had to do that. Communication with parents, trying to increase that, we're still refining that process of increasing our family engagement and activities. Working on that exit withdrawal process, we've done a lot of work with finding students who've exited or withdrawn to locate them. College career navigator, some one-on-one instruction, and then alternative TELC competency scores have helped. Second category, early literacy. Did you want to come talk about early literacy? Did you want me to? It's up to you, okay. So early literacy, you know, we had some, we've been working on early literacy for years. We've seen growth, and we're like, what happened? Well, once we sit down and you look at the data, you kind of go, it makes sense. No one wants to be happy with a two, but we're looking at it, we go, it makes sense. We had a higher number of students who are entering school off track. We know that. So as we try to grow our community activism with our preschool instruction, the curriculum, working with Oberlin kids, we know that we've got to do more work there. It's not just finding activities for families, it's really getting them to understand some of the academic requirements for our babies as they enter school. Students are academically further behind, although they're making progress, growth is still not at grade level. Increased number of K through, K through three student identified needing special education services, and we have increased social and behavior supports in pre-K through three. So as a reminder, early literacy is pre-K through three. It's not fourth, it's not fifth, it's pre-K through three, actually it's K through three. So these are some of the ways that we were intervening, with the after-school tutoring, smaller class sizes, new RTI process, breaking down item analysis for any type of assessments, what are we really looking at, what are they really deficient in? Audit reporting to EMIS and then family interventions. And I'm going to actually show you the components of early literacy so you can see that, like, what does that really mean?
Misha, can you remind us what RTI is?
Response to intervention.
I was going to ask EMIS, can you tell us what that is?
EMIS coordinator, I don't remember the exact, it's something, something, something. Educational management informational systems or system supports. So EMIS coordinator is the person who takes all of your data for the district and submits it to the state. And, you know, things like she's got to report what curriculum we're using for English Language Arts. She's got to report our attendance, and she works with Power School, our staff credentials and licensure. She reports anything related that that state receives. She works with all of our information systems to make sure that they're accurate. So the early literacy is divided up into three different components. And if you just, I mean, the charts are there if you want to look at them, but the simple version is, it's promotion of fourth grade is about 35% of the score. And that's how many students are going to fourth grade. Well, typically we have 100. We had a parent request this year and, you know, meeting with a parent, going to response to intervention, figuring out how many different ways we can meet the students' needs. It was determined that per the request of the student, remain in third grade, which meant that we went, we could have had 100, but we had 98%. So that dropped us 2% by that one student, and we miss the three-star by one student. Improving literacy, that is where we see the charts, and that is that comparison data of, we look to see how much a student grew from one grade level to the other. And it's based on their reading improvement plan, their RIMP. So students who were not considered on track, let's say I had a first grader who was not on track. We have to report when they get to second grade, are they now on track? So that's what that is, is how many, what percentage of our students moved, that were off-track moved to on-track. So 37 last year, oh, that's wrong, I should say 23, 24, sorry. 37.3% were moved from off-track to on-track last year, and this year we had 31.3% moved to on-track. So we saw a negative 6% with them moving on-track. Doesn't mean they don't grow. They just don't, they're not on track. So let's say we have a student that was two grade level behind, I'm a third grader and I was two grade levels behind. Well, I might move you up a grade level, but you're still off-track. So that's where some students are off-track because of that, some are off-track because we're not growing them. The third section is grade three proficiency. This is about 40% of your score. So keep in mind, 40% of our score is based on third graders proficiency. Third graders are also calculated in improving literacy. So the majority of this section, of this area of this report card, is about third graders. We know that our students get their proficiency scores back from their test. And, you know, we, most of us see 700, 650, they got to make a 700. That score would be included in improving literacy. The grade three proficiency is a sub-score. So for every test the kids take, they get two scores in third grade, that ELA test. They get one for the entire, were you proficient, did you make the 700? And they get another one that's based on certain questions that they pull out, it's a sub-score. And they say, hey, with these, this reading sub-score, were they proficient just in this reading sub-score? So for this area, we have some students who made the 700 and proficient and made their 50. But then we also have some kids who made the 700 and were proficient. We've got kids who made over 700 and proficient but didn't meet the 50 sub-score. So it's kind of tricky, you know, it's, we sit down in the fall, look at it, we sit down and get in the winter, sit down and again in the spring, in the summer, you know, looking at the calculations and having to calculate it ourselves based on the state's formula to see. And, you know, we want five stars, we're at two, and what would have given us three stars? One more student in any one of those categories. So we've talked about graduation, we've talked about early literacy. Third area is achievement.
Sorry, before we leave early literacy, I'm curious where we are in our five-year cycle of curriculum?
This is our ELA review this year.
Okay.
So we've already had one meeting, and we will be meeting, a meeting with the elementary school October, and then the high school, also high school, middle school meeting together here.
Last year with social studies and, until we adopt a new social studies curriculum.
So this is years of review where we actually look at what we have and how it worked or did not work. And then we bring in other companies to talk to us about what they have. We're piloting some, a few of them, and then we'll make the decisions this year.
So a question, at the top it says, percent of students promoted to fourth grade continuously enrolled in the district from kindergarten to third grade.
Yeah, so it's continuously for that year, it's not the full K through three. Yes, it's the full, so what happens is, let's say that we have a student who was retained in a grade level. We have to report that they were retained, so there's a lot of reporting that goes with that. But that's just saying that they have to be there for that entire year. Let's say that we have a kid that came in March, or they're not calculated in that. Or if they left early.
Another question I had is, so you're talking about the focus on third graders. Promotion to fourth grade generally means third graders. However, do we have like students that get skipped, like they might skip from second to fourth, and do they get counted in that number?
We typically, if we have a child who was accelerated and they were in second and then they went up to fourth, what ends up happening is those, they look at those third graders. So, yes, they kind of get skipped over, almost like when we get a retention, like say we have someone who's retained in third grade. Next year they won't even be counted in the promotional for you even though they go to fourth. So that's part of that K3 little stipulation. There's some kids who aren't counted based on an acceleration over and skipping the grade or repeating a grade and then being promoted that way.
So then that means 75% of that score is about the third grade.
Third grade. Yep, third grade, it's all about third grade. And it is, right? You, you kind of say to yourself, K through three literacy, this is about our kindergarteners, first graders, it is. It's about how are we supporting the kinders, first and second grades to prepare them for third grade? But the reality of it is, is it's everything you do in third grade. You can have a phenomenal year in first grade and second grade, you get to third grade and it's a whopping for you. And it can, it can mess up the entire gamut, and that's why we really need to make sure, you know, our conversations have been, are we putting enough support in the third grade? Not to trick a report card, but to really give them what they need to prepare to move on to fourth grade. Great questions, thank you. So achievement is our next area, we received a three stars in this area, we've had three stars in this area for quite a bit. This is about the proficiency level of our test. Proficiency level, proficiency level, proficiency level. And each level is worth a different amount of points for our report card. You would go, well, if you're proficient, you get one point. You're proficient, one point. If you're accomplished, you receive 1.1 point as a district per student. If you are advanced, you get 1.2 for each student who's advanced. And if you're advanced plus, you get 1.3 for each student that is advanced plus. One of the big questions people have is, how do you get advanced plus? That's for students who have been accelerated. So if you were an accelerated student, like you said, they skipped over a grade, when they take the test, if they earn an advance, they automatically give them an advanced plus.
Every year or just the first year?
For that test, for every time they take a test, every time. So let's say the next year, I'm in fifth grade, let's say I got accelerated in second grade. When I'm in 10th grade, I'm still considered accelerated. So just keep that in mind. Basic is 0.6, limited, 0.3, and untested would be zero. And then I tried to give you a little chart so that you can see what percentage of our students fell into each category and how many points we earned. We earned 85.905 points, that's what I was talking about back with the comparison data. So we had 85.905 out of 109, so our percentage was 78.2. Here's the trick, and I say trick because it's the weirdest thing. Well, how do you know what your maximum score is? They base the maximum score of points you can get, and they adjust all of this based on the top 2% of the districts in Ohio. So if the top 2% averaged like 109, that's when everybody else's maximum is. So we are 85.905, that's how many points we received, why they rounded like that, but that's our performance index, and it's based on them counting up all of the points we received. And then the chart on the left, I tried to give that a different visual so you could see the chunk of where most of our assessment came from. And if you see the largest area of our test results was proficient, right? 24.3 points was proficient. The next area was 24.2, and that was our advanced area. We still have some growth to go to get out of that limited and basic, because that would help us out quite a bit. But that's where the three stars are calculated based on your proficiency levels and how many points you received in each level. Questions with that one? Okay, I'm going to make this quick, don't get caught up in all the words, I get a little, you know, sometimes I go overboard, so I apologize. So the next area is progress, value added, and we earned five stars. And progress is just what it says. How much progress did you make? How many, much value did you add to a student? Did they learn more than just the average, you know, information? And so what we, in our area, we received five stars, they said that we've made some progress, a lot of progress. We still have a lot of gaps to fill. I'm going to start on the right side of this chart, down at the bottom. This is kind of letting you know within our testing areas where we had our strength, where we had value added. So proficiency and value added, two different things. I can be proficient and didn't grow a whole lot, but I was proficient, I was proficient. I can grow a lot and still not be proficient because I was so low. Or I could do both, I can grow and be proficient. Or I can both, not grow or be proficient. So what the chart is saying, in the areas that are lime green, our students made progress similar to the statewide expectations. They kind of say, this is where we think your students will grow based on all of their testing years of data. And you can see the green areas. The darker, darker gray, our students made more progress than expected. The light blue, students made more progress than expected. And then the red area there, students made less progress. And then the yellowish, students made less progress. And you can see our areas that we really need to work on are that, the math, right? Fourth grade math, algebra, and those are the areas that we have seen some increase but not enough to holistically for the entire grade level. So we still have a lot of work to do there. On the left side, the reason I have this here is because you're going to see some slides later, they're going to be like, whoa, what happened there? Overall composite growth as a district, the gain index is 7.12, you're going to say, what is that? Well, the gain index, and I tried to put a little explanation down there, it's like your scorecard, it tells us. It tells us of our students who grew, what did they do? Zero basically says, you know, you, you grew what you were expected to grow. You're there, you're moving along. Below that is you're not making growth. And above that, you are making growth. So to have a seven point one two overall says that we're making a lot of growth as a district, adding value. So those students are learning more than just a year's worth of growth. They went ahead and converted that and they say, well, if you think about what is the effect size of your district? So point twenty-two, you know, that's the effect size of that much extra growth that was made in our district. Also in that area is our chronic absenteeism. Um, and you can see the trends with our chronic absenteeism. The blue line is our district, the red line is the state. And in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were at twenty-four point five percent of our students were reporting as having some chronic absenteeism problems. And now we're down to eighteen point four. So it's going down. Our students are coming to school a little bit more. And when we say chronic absentee, those are the students who you are chronically absent. It's not the students who are just missing a couple of days here and there.
Chronic absenteeism too, it doesn't, um, the state calculate that by, sometimes we always tell the students, well, you're sick or something like that. The state either calculate chronic absenteeism as either you're in school or not in school. Whether, whether you have COVID or you're sick, doesn't matter. You're in school or you're not in school. So it's no excuses. I know a lot of times we give students the three sick days or it doesn't matter for the state. We, we have to excuse those, but like I said, it's either in school or not in school. That's the only thing.
There is no gray area.
There's no gray.
Yep. And it's hours, not days. Thank you, Mr. Nimony. We stopped doing days years ago. It's hours. So that's what gets a lot of our students as well because of the hours. They think, well, I'll just miss an hour here and there. It all adds up. And the state sees that as chronic absenteeism. So gap closing, we received five stars. And there's a reason why you're gonna see a couple more slides with gap closing, because I know this is an area that you all like to talk about. Gap closing, you know, value added, we add the, the value. Gap closing, that we close a lot of the gaps. And we received a five, which they're saying is we're actually closing a lot of gaps, but we still got some work to do. So if you look there, it shows you how many possible points we could have earned and how many we actually earned. ELA achievement, that is our students, did they achieve it? Yes, we received six out of seven. They're achieving proficiency. Um, math achievement, five out of seven. Yeah, you know, okay. Um, English, language arts growth, that's where we need some work. So our students are proficient. They're getting that, that information. They're showing it, they're achieving, but we're not necessarily stretching them and growing them outside of that. Um, math growth, seven out of seven. We're seeing a lot of growth. And even though, if you remember, our proficiency is a little bit lower in achievement. So, um, graduation, five out of five. EL, we don't have enough students to actually get a score in that category. Um, our chronic absenteeism that we just talked about, we're five out of five. We're growing. Um, we're closing those gaps, I should say. And then our gifted performance indicator, um, the gifted progress, five out of five. That we're talking about our students' assessment scores, um, closing that gap there. Our gifted performance index, zero. And our gifted identification services, zero. And I'm gonna show you why. So overall, we received, um, thirty-four out of fifty-three points because of those categories were zero. The factors, let's talk about what happened with the gifted index and the gifted progress. Gifted index, we did not meet that indicator because you needed a ninety-seven point five percent as a goal and we reached ninety-six point two percent. That's why I want you to see some of this. You know, we didn't make it. But this is, I'm gonna give you what falls into that category as well so that you know why we didn't make it. Uh, gifted progress, we did make that three out of three stars. We made that gifted progress. We're, we're progressing. Our identification and services, we did not meet the goal. We needed an eighty percent and we received a seventy point eight percent to meet that goal. And I'm gonna talk to you about why we did not.
So it says out of five, but.
But then it says three there.
Like you either get it or you don't get it. Like there's no.
They've got, they've got some, some formulas, but it's hard to, because you're like, it's so easy to miss it. It's so easy to not make it. And it's so easy, you know what I mean? It's like, as you saw, like the third grade, it, we're such a small district. It takes one or two kids to actually, or one or two things to do to give you that next grade or rating. So, um, when they talked about the, when we talked about gap to closing and the achievement area, this is the one ninety-six point two. And it was based on those levels again. See how those levels came back? How many points we received there? So that was why we received, um, the ninety-six point two for the performance index. We received ninety-six point two, we needed a ninety-seven point five. We needed a few more students to either go to, um, accomplished. And it could be the basic student, you know, that was the question we had. What happened that our gifted student received a basic on that assessment? That student by themselves receiving a proficient or accomplished could have been what we needed to get us that indicator. The next factor we talked about was identification. Identification, you get points by, based on the grade band. What do I mean by that? K-two, students who are in K-two, you need at least fifteen kids identified in grades K through two to get the points for that. You need at least fifteen in the grade band of three, six. Fifteen in seven through eight, nine through twelve. Each band needs a minimum of fifteen students to get the points for identification. And if you see, we did not count our K through two, um, at the top. So in superior cognitive, we had, um, there's fifteen points possible. For our K-two band, we earned nine. And then down at the bottom, we talk about gifted services, those students who were serviced. Our K-two band at that point did not count because we didn't, um, have enough of them that were actually classified as gifted. The fifteen to count it. So we need at least fifteen students to count it. And so we've taken a look at our assessments. Are they geared to actually determining, looking at our academics? We have a new gifted intervention specialist from the ESC again this year. And so we're working with her to find some of those gaps. We now have a gifted intervention specialist at every single building that are now working on growing their craft so they can support our students. But we're looking at what assessments we're using for identification and what needs to happen. Because we're, you know, we say K-two, we're talking about students who just got to kindergarten. And you want me to assess to determine if they're gifted? So, and then the gifted representation index, um, that's part of that area as well. Identification, services, representation, are we servicing? And what we noticed is, um, in our upper grades, you kinda go, how come we had a ninety-three point four, four percent servicing ninth through twelfth grade students? Those students were at JVS. We were able to identify that the students who were not serviced were at JVS. And so now we're working on that this year to make sure that when some of them come back at that last period of the day, that we work with them. Um, we've had a conversation about sending someone over to JVS to see how we can support as well. Lot of questions. Questions about that, the gifted one?
Well, so this gifted representation index, are we saying that we don't have a good representation of?
We don't have a good representation of students and, and students with disabilities and students, um, I'd, I'd ever, economically disadvantaged, minority students. We don't have a great representation.
Are we gonna work on that?
Yep, we're working on it. We're working on it. And it's the percentage of your district, yeah. So we're first trying to work on, are we using the right tools to even identify? And then, um, the last section was college career workforce, military readiness. And we talked about these eleven, uh, measures indicators last year. This was the first year for that report card area. And this is just a reminder of you of the eleven measures or the areas that fall within there.
And so I have a question about that because I don't have any data or anything to back this up. But I feel like our district has always had students that are kind of interested in all of these different areas. So we've already been supporting students across all these different, you know, potential next steps. Did you, is that part of why we did well here?
Yes, yes. Because these are conversations that have been happening for a long time about what pathway. We, we, what we needed to work on was how we were documenting it. And we also needed to work on is, there was a middle group of students. Everyone always assumes it's the students who are just not going to college that would be the reason why we wouldn't get the points. In actuality, uh-oh, I don't know what I just did. I don't know if that was me. But in actuality, what we, what we noticed when we looked at the data, it was, it was really our students who were in the middle bubble. Because a lot of our students who may be having some academic problems and we're trying to figure out, some of them, you know, we work with them on their credentialing. We work with them on, was it retail credentialing? Or some of them go to JVS and get credentials. But then we have students who work with the CCP and they fall within there. They get the remediation free scores, they're going to the military. It was the students who were like, I get decent grades, I just don't know what I'm gonna do, that were the ones that we had to figure out and have the hardest conversations about, how do we support you? And for some of them, it was, do you need to do some credentialing? Do we need to work on your test scores? Do we need to look at how many, how many credits are you away from getting CCP twelve, you know, the, the credits of CCP? So it's, it's purposely, being purposeful when you look at the student's path. And because that work started a few years ago with us, when, longer, it's been here for a long time. But we just kinda looked at what their requirements are and say, okay, based on theirs, who wouldn't fall into that? And what do we need to do with that student to get them there? So that's why I was kinda shocked when I was at the curriculum director's meeting and people were like, yeah, we got a three. And keep in mind, the state bumped everybody up to, I think the lowest you can get was a three. Was it the three or two? Because they said it was the first year. So I was like, how do you, how do you get that?
And they told us.
Two years ago, stuff came out, two years ago. Beginning of the year last year, we were actually going through, because they were changing some of the indicators. Um, so people have had that time to look at. I think where a lot of them, they worked with the SATs, the, um, AP courses, the college credit plus. And they didn't, they put all the eggs in the basket for JVS, for credentialing. They put all of their eggs in the basket for apprenticeship and they put it in the family's hands. Whereas for our district, we said, uh, no, we're going to actually, you know, have our high school staff, um, the counselors, Anita Topper Brown and Rich Morgan, and work actually with the students, you know. Our people services department did a lot of work, you know. Jay Nimony did a lot of work with Sheila Felix Up. Jay Nimony did a lot of work with actually going to work with students on what's, what's next. So it was a lot of folks who had to, I'm calling the parent that I know and say, hey, your kid is, you know, they need to fall into one of these eleven categories. My, my kid got straight A's. What do you mean? Um, you know, maybe they need to take that S-A-T, ACT again, let's, let's talk about it. Or let's talk about, you know, industry credentials, how many credits do they need for whatever? We might not get a hundred percent, but to get a hundred percent is, you know, Dr. Hall said, we're getting a hundred percent. We are getting, don't you dare say that. That's my evaluation, I'm getting marked off. Oh, my goodness, I said we're not getting a hundred percent. We will get a hundred percent. Yes, we will.
It's recorded.
It's recorded, I know.
One of the things too, we do a great job of, we're the only, um, district in a county that received five stars in this area. So the ESC actually came over and said, hey, what, what are you guys doing? Why did you get that? And like, um, Mistake said too, I had other people ask me, said, we didn't think it counted this year. Well, they told us the last two years that it was coming. They gave us a, a rough score last year and we've been working on it. But we also said, you know what? We, we tracking our kids, uh, our, we're, we're, we have all our seniors at freshman year. And making sure that from that freshman year on, they're falling one of these categories. So what we do is we have a spreadsheet with all of our students there. And, um, whether that student leaves or goes somewhere else, we're tracking them down. We're making sure a hundred percent of our kids graduate. So we actually have a sheet that says, you know, this kid's gonna fall in this category, that category, to make sure all of our students is, um, accomplishing one of these areas. And we also started, we're working on next year's data. Since this data's in a rear, we're working on next year's data right now.
Yeah.
So we actually have a spreadsheet right now of who's not tracking. And we also, we, we know right now, we have four students that we're kinda unaccounted for. So we're right now finding out where do they go in this, these categories. So that, that data's right there as far as, and we're.
We have it, yeah.
The key is also keeping a, a key EMIS person. And our EMIS person is actually communicate with the schools, let us know where his kids are. Hey, this kid went here, this kid did this. So making sure that person talks to them, this is an industry credentialing class. So make sure the data is accurately reported within the, um, DOD piece. So yeah, hats off to everyone because I tell you what, this is, um, it's, uh, all having sixty-seven or so seniors or seventy or so seniors, um, making sure that they're in one of these categories. Was accomplishment for the staff and even tracking the students down that, um, were not here and saying, hey, we need to make sure you graduate. We also need to make sure you fall in one of these areas here. We need to help you fall in these areas that count. The military, we had to make sure we get the right paperwork from the military. We're calling military on the phone saying, hey, we need this form here because we need to put in that system. So it's a team effort of, um, making sure everyone was accounted for.
And although a student could fall into multiple categories, you only count as one. And so we determine which one, we put it in there, you know. They fall under one, that's what they ask for. Um, I mean, I was, I thought to myself, the other districts, two hundred and fifty hours, some of your kids have full-time jobs and internships that they're working with.
You're not tracking it.
Like, right, you didn't go contact their employer to see if they're actually, is it career-based? Is it something they're actually interested in doing? Are they doing these hours for a career? Like, why would you not, you know, track that? So, to each his own.
Just a comment, at our graduation, when we have all the students stand up that did this or that, first of all, almost everybody stands up at some point. And a lot of it reflects this, what's listed here, so.
So we've been on the right track. We really have been.
Absolutely.
And this represents last, last year's graduation.
June twenty twenty-four.
Unlike the other.
Yeah, it's still the, it's still, it's June twenty twenty-four. It's not these recent graduates. These recent graduates, we have their spreadsheet that Dr. Hall was talking about now. We're going there now.
Okay, so this is the same as the graduation rate.
Yep, 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 yes, ma'am.
What, how many students does ninety percent, like, represent? Like, how many missed it?
Out of sixty, was it sixty?
Maybe about two students.
Two, two, like it's two students?
To make it, yeah.
So two stu, two more students, we get to a hundred percent?
Right. So for that year, so now, you know, we're at ninety, because a little bit more students, so it's four this year. We'll get there, we'll get to a hundred, a hundred percent, yeah. You're like, are we gonna get there? We're getting to a hundred percent.
Yeah, by our data now, we should be, and this is something we do track. So we're really close to getting that hundred percent on that.
But teamwork, everybody working, you bet you're laughing. Okay, so a hundred percent. So with that said, um, what is our district focus? This is the last one here before we do questions, any other, any additional questions? So based on all the information we talked about is with our college career readiness, workforce, military re, well, college, career, workforce, and military readiness pathways, we just talked about, is continuing our partnerships with LC3, Oberlin College, JVS, and then our local businesses. Because you see, a lot of those indicators fall into categories of our partnerships, whether it be with college credits or, um, internships or, uh, credentialing. And then increasing our student and family support. Um, our FAFSA nights, our scholarship nights, our applications, our resume. We tried to do a little increase of that last year with some more family nights. We didn't get the best, you know, um, number of parents. But we really wanna work on still increasing the number of opportunities that we have for families, even if that means we need to start looking at having some of the stuff during the day or earlier in the day or whether it be, you know, some Saturday activities. I know a lot of people don't come on Saturdays. But for some of our families, that might be the only time that they're able to come and receive some of this information. Gifted, obviously identification in our assessment and our reporting. Uh, K through two is the, is the big one there. What's happening with our K through two. And if we're able to get that identification and that reporting, we can get some of those marks and those indicators. Uh, professional development, we worked last year really hard on, uh, putting together some processes for, for gifted. We didn't have, you know, we did, but it wasn't very clear. So we spent a lot of time on that last year. As I said earlier, we now have a gifted intervention special license at every single building. Um, actually received mine as well, so that, you know, we're all going to the trainings and we're trying to enrich and kind of think about, how are we questioning? How are we asking students questions? How are we conducting instruction? It can't be the same, um, as core instruction. So we're working on that. And then family information nights, we had one last year. We would like to, um, do another one again this year in hopes to get some more families. Um, achievement, we gotta work on, uh, that vertical alignment. We started having vertical alignment last year. Now it's a little bit more purposeful this year. And what I mean by that is identifying what those gaps are in every single grade level. And now we bring the teams together. So six through twelve, um, is meeting in every subject matter to say, these are the gaps that happen in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, all the way up. How do we fill it? How do we fill it, who could fill it, and what time of year can you fill it, what month can you fill it? What supports do you need to fill it? So we are doing that, and also K through five is the same thing, or pre-K through five is the same thing. We're also have opportunities for like our fifth grade teachers, um, especially our gifted intervention specialists, to work with the middle school. And the same thing with our, our teachers who are teaching the algebra and all of that, to work with the high school. Um, and then tutoring, uh, we've been trying to increase our tutoring. We had a flyer, it was going to go out last year, we're going to send out this year, to really see if we can hire some community tutors. We work with the college all the time, but what we run into is sometimes the students' classes don't allow them to come in to tutor during the times that we need them to happen. Um, and we need some supports during the school day, uh, much more than we do after school for our older grade levels. Uh, K through literacy, as we talked about, increasing, um, work and comprehension is one of the areas that they're working on with the main idea, details, compare, contrast. We saw that was a big area, um, that took a hit, took a hit this year. Providing tutoring for students in grades one through three, um, we've opened up that tutoring window, a lot longer this year, that will happen. Increase supporting birth through five, as we talked about, with our community partners, and really talk about early literacy hands-on with families. You know, yes, we want to give them some social emotional supports, um, some community supports, but we have to really talk about, what is it that a student should know when they walk into kindergarten? Um, and then evaluate our current interventions being offered, our programs, our staff, everything, um, with our academics, is it working? And if it's not, what are we doing about it?
Do we feel like we're still seeing some of the effects of COVID from where the kids are coming in, or have we kind of gotten out of that?
I, I, I think that we're always going to see that, as long as those kids, the students are in school. I, but I think that some of that is, um, well, I don't even, I don't want to just say it's COVID, I think there's a lot of different factors. I think COVID in the sense that we say the students had a learning gap, but I think some of that is in the sense of, how many things happened to change academically within the state of Ohio that our parents weren't able to keep up with, because they kind of happened underground, if that makes sense. And we try to keep them aware of it. Um, so I think some of it is COVID, especially with our older students. Um, our younger students weren't born, you know, our, our kindergartners were, you know, just born, so they had a chance to be out of it a little bit more, but I think with our high school and our middle school students, we see more of the impact. And then, any questions? Besides that, I think we asked.
Well, my question is, one, thank you very much for that presentation, I really appreciate it. You said that was the shorter version.
I know. I know.
I don't know what the long one is.
Last time, I think we were like an hour and fifteen minutes, and I know this time it was almost like four, almost an hour. And I thought it would be a lot shorter, you all asked questions, that's why. We could have been done twenty minutes ago.
Lots of great information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next to our reports, we have our facilities update. Um, and we have Danny Nicola provide the facilities update. Our, um, projects, which we've been continuously working on and meeting with, um, various people from the community, and, um, had a couple of meetings, uh, with contractors and in the area. Um, today, we wanted to briefly up, update the community on an item that's going to be on the board, um, agenda, the resolution for approving a real estate purchase and sale agreement with J and K Doven Land. Um, this is something we've been working on for last couple of years. Um, it's a piece of property that's been, um, in our possession for these over fifty years, probably more than that, we can't even track it back. Um, so, and we reached, finally reached an agreement of how to resolve that issue and concern. And Mr. Nicola is going to talk about the resolution here.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
In various meetings with Dr. Hall, discussing our, our new facilities and the property we own, and how we wanted to lay it out, uh, we came across a piece of property the district owned on State Route fifty-eight, Pittsfield Township. Well, that seemed odd, that we would own a piece of property out there. So Dr. Hall asked me to look into it and see what I could find out. So I started on the county's website, and that blue cyan dot. Right there.
Mm-hmm. Can you tell us what some of that other stuff is, so we can orient ourselves?
Sure. This is the JVS.
Oh.
This is, uh, Doven's farm.
You gotta take this, or you need to take the mic with you.
Okay, so this is Route fifty-eight, this is the intersection Route twenty, this is the JVS right here. This is Doven Farms, this is Hughes Road. I think this is the boundary of our district.
Way south.
Yeah, it is.
Wow, okay.
That's Walmart, up there.
That's Walmart up there. So, that's what I mean, it seemed kind of odd, we'd have a piece of property out there.
That's weird.
So he asked me to look at it, see what information I could gather, so that's the location. Go to the next slide, Dr. Hall. So, this is the parcel, two hundred fourteen and a half feet by sixty-six feet.
That's a little.
So it's not really a big parcel, it's about a third of an acre.
Like, in real life, could, what, could you use that for, like, you couldn't build a house on that?
You could.
I'll get to that later, you're getting ahead of me. Let me go through the thing. But what I found interesting was this. It's owned by the Oberlin City School District Board of Education at one fourteen North Pleasant Street.
What?
I tracked back to nineteen sixty-six, and the board offices weren't at north, on one fourteen North Pleasant Street. They were on ninety-five North Pleasant, they moved to the Pleasant Street School in probably the seventies. In the nineties, when I was here, we moved it to the current location. So, you've owned this property for at least sixty years? You've been paying taxes on it for at least sixty years? Probably nobody even knew we owned it, so we've had a long time. And it, it actually could have been a lot longer than that. So that's all, about all I could gather on the website, but the questions came up, how did we acquire the property? Was it transferred to us, was it donated to us, were there restrictions? So I figured I would go to the county, uh, county recorder's office to get a copy of the deed. I went there, there's no deed. So then I went to the county auditor's office and said, how can you say this is our property, assess us taxes, when there's no recorded deed, how did you determine we owned it? So, I went through four different people there, maybe five, I was there about an hour, they kept looking, coming back. And finally, this is what they came back with. A survey had been done on the property some point earlier. Right there, start right there. It says it's owned by the Board of Education, but a deed couldn't be found. It's unclear how the lands within the Connecticut Western Reserve derive title. It wasn't, uh, by an act of Congress, unlike much of the other land. But they think the, uh, they, it did derive title from an act, uh, from a grant from King Charles in sixteen sixty-two.
What?
Yeah, pretty interesting, huh? So I went back and tried to research that. And what I found was, King Charles gave that property that included the Western Reserve to the Colony of Connecticut.
What, continue.
The colony, not the state.
Colonies.
Colonies.
It is some Hamilton stuff that is going on right now.
So then, what appears, uh, happened was, uh, in seventeen ninety-six, they sold it to the Connecticut Land Company. Now, it's unclear what happened after that, there were some disputes as the ownership with some, uh, local Indian tribes, with some other entities. Uh, so I couldn't gather too much information there, but in eighteen hundred, it became part of, uh, federal land. In eighteen oh-three, Ohio became a state. And then in eighteen nineteen, it became part of Pittsfield Township. In eighteen nineteen, Pittsfield Township started to survey the, survey the land and divide it into lots. And my best assumption on what happened was, typically, when they would develop townships or cities, they would dedicate a certain plot of land for the public schools. And I think they dedicated this land to the public schools. Now, I don't know if Pittsfield Township used it for a school or not, and I don't know when the, the Oberlin City School District was incorporated or when it may have expanded, but your district contains that parcel. So I think at some point, before nineteen sixty-six, and sometime after eighteen nineteen, the property was yours. So, again, you may have owned it for a long, long time.
That's why.
Before Hamilton, right.
So I called the, our attorney and said, what do we do? You know, we think we own it, there's no proof. He said, whether you keep it, you decide to dispose of it, you need to get a deed recorded with the county. I said, okay, what's that take? You have to have the property surveyed, you have to have a legal description written, then we have to file a deed. So we did all that, and it's recorded at the county, so if anybody goes now to check on the ownership of this land, they'll see a recorded deed there. So the next question with the attorney was, what if the board has no use for this property and they want to dispose of it? He said, you're bound by section thirty-three thirteen forty-one of the Higher Revised Code. Talks about, uh, disposal of real and personal property. But we felt that the land did not exceed ten thousand dollars. Therefore, you did not have to conduct a public auction, and you could just do a private sale, or dispose of it any other way, as long as it wasn't in violation of thirty-three thirteen forty-one. So I said, okay, now I understand that. So what do you think we should do? Should we have an auction? He, he said, I probably wouldn't conduct an auction, the property is so small, there's probably zoning rules about what can be built on or put up. He said, I would try to negotiate a private sale with an adjacent property owner. Okay, so here's our property. To the north, it's owned by Doven Land Company. To the east, it's owned by J.K. Doven Land Company. So the Doven family owns all that property. So it only made sense to contact the Doven family and see if they would be interested in, in purchasing the property from the board if you choose to sell it. So, we discussed this issue for quite a while. Finally, we came to terms on a purchase price and details of purchase agreement, and that's what we're presenting to you tonight.
How much?
Yeah, how much?
Right.
Thousand dollars.
Okay.
One thousand dollars?
One thousand dollars.
When they said it was worth ten?
No, if it's below ten thousand dollars.
Oh, it, well, oh, I'm sorry.
The county auditor has a praise for about four thousand. But discussing with our attorney, we don't think that's an accurate number. And if the board chooses to keep the property, I would probably contest that value with the auditor. So basically, what you're saying is, that's probably limited by, uh, by the zoning courts, uh, zoning laws for farmland. So you're telling me farmland is about twelve thousand dollars an acre in Lorain County? That seemed pretty high to me.
It is.
What's our, what's our annual tax liability?
The taxes are about seventy-two dollars a year, so that's about over six dollars a month.
Eighty, ninety years.
But considering the amount of time you've had the property, how long have you been paying it?
Sixty-two. Wait, when, 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 when did we start charging taxes on property in Ohio?
I, I don't know.
Oh, God.
And I can't even find out the date it became your property. Somewhere between.
But we, we, Oberlin, Oberlin came into effect what year? The school district came into effect what year?
I don't know.
Neither.
Yeah, I mean, the town was eighteen thirty-three, but the, I'm sure there wasn't a school district there.
Right, so eighteen thirty, oh, yeah. And I'm pretty sure that it wasn't seventy-two dollars.
Yeah, back then it was.
Probably a goat.
I'm guessing what happened, the property was probably valued at some point. And then, what they do is every three years, they revise that, and then every six years, they do a reassessment. Typically, they usually just tack on so much percentage, you know? I'm thinking what happened when you add two or three percent, or five percent, whatever the average is, year after year after year after year, it gets to be a certain number. If the property owner's not contesting it, so be it, that's what we're going to assess it on.
Have we been maintaining the property, spending money?
No.
No.
They've been maintaining it, right?
Currently being farmed. In fact, when I contacted Mr. Doven, he was aware that there was school property there. He said, I thought it was a little bit different spot, but it was there, he's farming part of it.
It's theirs, anyway.
Um, and, and that's why it was kind of hard to negotiate with anybody, especially, you know, somebody else. Because it's right there in the middle of his land, it'd be very difficult to use it for almost anything else.
He's been, how long do we think he's been farming that property?
Since he's been alive.
I think that's an adverse possession issue, right?
Yeah, thank you lawyer. That's what I was thinking, I was like, that's his property anyway. Yeah, let's take that thousand dollars.
I'm guessing the Dovens have been farming that land for a long time.
Yeah, so a question I have is, um, is there any kind of rule that says, hey, if the auditor has this, you know, it's not completely arbitrary, but if they have it assessed at this amount, are we required to have it valued? You'll sell it for something comparable to that, or some percentage of that?
As long as you feel comfortable that it's below the ten thousand dollar threshold, there's no requirement to get a, a new, uh, appraisal. We could certainly do that, you'll probably spend about two thousand dollars to have it appraised.
Right.
Um, we've already spent some money getting the deed, by recording it during the survey.
That's expensive.
Um, and, and that was all necessary, whether you keep it or whether you get rid of it. So it's, it's not like you wasted the money.
Right.
Um, but if you want to continue to put more money into it, I mean, that's, that's your choice.
Are you recommending that we do that?
I, I, I think it's a good deal just to dispose of it, I think it would suit the Doven family, their properties all around there. I don't think it really had much use to anybody else. If you had a public auction, I wouldn't even expect to get any bidders. So it would be my recommendation to.
And isn't there like, something like, I've been using this land for X amount of years?
That didn't count if it was owned by a school district, though.
I don't know.
No.
There's a, there's a. I'm not a lawyer, but there is a thing called an easement by prescription. If you've been using it for a certain amount of time, certain, you can legally claim you have an easement to use that property.
Right.
Now, I don't know if that would work for a public school district, I don't know how that would play out. Both sides would probably spend a lot in attorney fees to fight that.
To lose.
That's what I mean, at this point, to go any further with any legal issues, uh, I, I don't think would be worthwhile.
And you could go up against too, as we, if we auction it, he could probably bid on it for less too. So, keep that in mind, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Interesting, interesting history lesson.
It sure was, that was cool, I thought you were joking.
I mean, it was like nowhere near.
Okay, and that concludes my, um, his, history lesson and report.
All right. So, next, I will, I will entertain a motion to approve board items A through C.
Moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, those items are, A is the approval of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five special session, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five rego session, and September ninth, twenty twenty-five special session minutes. B is the approval of the resolution declaring impracticality of transportation of identified students per Revised Code three-three-twenty-seven-point-zero-two. And C is the approval of the resolution approving a real estate purchase and sale agreement with J and K Doven Land LLC, which Mr. Dina Cola just talked to us about. Um, any questions, comments, changes? Discussion further, hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White.
Yes.
Ms. Gadson.
Yes.
Ms. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Ms. Simeka.
Yes. Okay, and then, next, I will entertain a motion to approve treasurer's items A through D.
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, Bob.
Okay, we ended the month of, um, August with fifty thou, or fifty million eighty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Whoops, I read the wrong page, I'm sorry. It was fifty-one thousand twenty, fifty-one million, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and nine cents. Um, we had forty-one thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents of outstanding warrants. The number I gave you earlier was the total in money that we have invested in Star Ohio and US Bank, and then also, it included petty cash. Um, interest for the month was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, fifty-seven dollars and ten cents. So far, year-to-date, we've earned interest for two hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred one dollars and fifty-two cents. Part of that money goes into the building fund, the Nexus Fund, and then the rest in the general fund. For our five-year forecast, which is now the four-year forecast, but I'm still going to call it the five-year, because we're going to continue to do the five-year, and I will only submit four years. So that the board can see what that fifth year means, since that's when our renewals happen, and so, they're all in a five-year renewal, so. We've seen the revenue increase from our real estate taxes. Um, so far, year-to-date, they're all collected, up to this point, we're about six hundred thousand dollars ahead of last year at this time. Um, tangible personal property, we did have Nexus pay what they had in arrears, so we are up close to eight hundred thousand dollars there. Income tax, last year was the final catch-up from the COVID era, where everybody had extensions. Um, so we're down about five hundred thousand dollars in income tax collections. And then, everything else is pretty much in line, dollar for dollar, so. We're seventeen percent through the year, and most of our expenses are within that seventeen percent, except for materials and supplies. And that's because we buy most of our material and supplies at the beginning of the year, not throughout the year. So, um, overall, we're in good shape. Um, we started the year with fourteen million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars, and we're currently, we ended the month of August with eighteen million, two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five thousand and thirty dollars, which is because we get all our real estate and income tax at the beginning of the year. And then we'll spend that until January, when we get our new income. So, we're all in line. With all funds, um, we really haven't spent too much out of the bu, building fund yet. Um, but all the other funds are pretty much lined up from the report that was shown. Does anybody have any questions on those? If not, um, by September thirtieth, which is today, we have to approve our permanent appropriations. So that was in your packet. We are appropriating twenty-one million dollars out of the general fund, two-point-six million dollars out of the special reserve, one million one hundred and fifty thousand for the debt fund, and then eight million dollars for capital project funds. Enterprise fund is the food service fund, five hundred and fifty thousand is where we've been at for the last four years. Custodial funds are the student activity funds, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, and then we have some private trusts that are two thousand. For a total of thirty-three million four fifty, four hundred and fifty-two thousand. Any questions?
I had a question about the private purpose trust fund.
Yes.
That's the one that's been two thousand dollars, but then this year it's six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-five cents.
You are looking at, I'm not sure.
Looking at the third page of the permanent appropriation resolution.
Oh, that is the balance?
Okay.
The most we can give away is two thousand dollars, unless somebody does.
Got it, so we've got six thousand dollars in it, but we can only use two thousand dollars for it?
Two thousand dollars, I think, correct.
And the rest just hangs out?
The rest just hangs out. It's for very specific things and nobody is applying for it. I give those funds to the high, and we have a new high school principal who probably isn't really keyed on those, there's other things that she's worried about. But yes, we do look at trying to get rid of that money if we can. Next, we have the five-year forecast. We did update it, we did go over it a little bit last month after the finance committee met. I did update it to the income tax that came in, and I've adjusted some of the. We got our insurance um increase, so I did adjust those, and we're pretty much locked in at where we were. Over the next five years, we do show a declining balance. The state wants us to show a declining balance with all the new laws that they've put out there. Hopefully, they listen to the resident property tax. And Lennical, um, that the Ohio Educational Policy of Institute Analysis just did. They brought out some shocking news for me that I just wanted to go over a little bit with you, is that percent of residents' taxes that went for schools in nineteen seventy-five was forty-six-point-one percent. And two thousand and three is the most up-to-date numbers they could get, is now the residents are responsible for sixty-seven-point-five percent of school funding. Businesses went from eighteen-point-eight percent to twenty-one percent. Tangible personal property went from thirty-five-point-one percent down to eleven-point-five percent. That's really the big swing, is that businesses used to have to pay on their inventory and now they don't have to. And the state doesn't refund it anymore. And then the state went from, where was it? The state's number is um. Now I can't find it. But the state is down to right around thirty-two percent funding for schools. So residents, business, and the state is just a little bit over what current businesses are paying. So, most of the property taxes that you pay do come to the schools, and that's really our biggest funding for schools. And that's really what the legislators have done since nineteen seventy-five, is given away stuff for the businesses to try to juvenileate an economy that hasn't rejuvenated, so it hasn't really worked for them. But the report is out there, I'm gonna have Steve post a link to it on my page if anybody wants to read it. It isn't that long, it's only about eleven pages, but they bring out a lot of neat facts that. And that is really our story, is that we are building our new middle school on the increase of taxes that the reappraisal gave. And if the state is really looking at taking that away from us, how are we gonna pay for that school without putting new levies on the ballot to bring it back? Then we do have the donations for the month, we have Walmart Vision Center, two hundred and fifty dollars with back-to-school supplies. OC Student Athletic Advisory Committee, four hundred dollars back-to-school supplies. Ohio Educational Credit Union, two hundred and fifteen dollars of back-to-school supplies. The Locke Family, two hundred dollars for the backpack program. Lewis Rathwell Love, one hundred dollars to the backpack program. And Wilson Bruce Evans Home Historical Society, thirty dollars of book donations. And that's all I have, Ms. President.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadson?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Semeca?
Yes. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve superintendent's consent items A through E four.
Oh, moved, so moved.
It's properly moved and seconded, Dr. Hall?
Thank you. We have item A, is approval of following professional service contracts. These are field trips, um, in agreement with the district and the college. Item B is North Coast Interpreting Services, ASL interpreters. It's another service that provides support for our students, our ASL students in Oberlin City Schools. Item C is a tender loving care transportation company. We utilize this service, they specialize in transporting um our students with special um services, special needs. So we're contracting with them um to help with our transportation um department. Item D is excess costs with disabilities. Item E is personnel report. Uh, on the personnel report, we have a few resignations here. Ron Byers is retiring, he provided affirmation for us. We already have his um job posted, so we can have a replacement for him and try to find a science teacher early. Ron Byers has been phenomenal throughout the district, we'd like to thank him for his service and all he's done for our school and our district. Kids love him and he does a great job for us. Hopefully, we'll um start recruiting here in the winter and be able to find a teacher to replace him in the science area.
Quick question, sorry, I might have missed it. The tender loving care transportation company, what, what is that for?
They provide transportation services for um special needs students, specialize in special needs students.
Okay.
So we have some students that receive, especially if we can't provide transportation for them, so um they specialize in that service.
So that's to get them to and from school here?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Most of those are for out of the district, kids that are being educated outside of the district.
Okay, so they, they live in our district, they need to.
And we have, have to send him to Garfield Heights.
Wow, okay.
Item D, R E two, I'm sorry, I, E two is um classification positions. We do have some students, our, some, our staff does move in classifications. Cheryl Anderson has been phenomenal, she's um one of our van drivers and also she's helping out um in the cafeteria as well. So she do in dual service for um for the district. She also, congratulations, she's also in the process of receiving her bus driver license. Item three is employees, like to welcome aboard for new employees. We have Edwin Bowen, a substitute cafeteria helper. Isabella Morik, Brittany Newcomb is back to the district. Kenny Washington is permanent building sub and will be doing dual roles as that and a monitor. And we have a substitute bus driver, Travis Wilson, who's also a parent and works at a college, so he would like to um help us out with transportation services. He received his bus driver's license this year, and he's already been on a couple routes, providing support for us.
And are we still looking for bus drivers and substitute teachers?
Always. We have um information going out on social media, we're looking for bus drivers, substitute teachers, cafeteria helpers, night custodians. So an advertisement will be going out here shortly for that. And item four would be supplemental contracts for some of our coaches. We are trying to hire our coaches currently now for the winter. And we have some home instruction teachers, um support staff, they'll be hired in. And request an approval for item A three four, um, do we have any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Am I allowed to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing, no other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadson?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Semeca?
Yes. Um, next we have board updates. Does anyone have a board update?
Yes. As a board liaison, um, the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit, which we're a part of, is still pending. Nothing has happened recently. The removal of teachers from the State Teachers Retirement Board has also been paused by a judge because uh the OEA, the um Federation of Teachers, and the OSBA have filed lawsuit to stop them from removing all the teachers from the State Board of Education Committee. So hopefully that'll work out, I, I think it's travesty, but whatever. The movement to get rid of property taxes is still underway. And a reminder to anybody that doesn't know this already, as Bob said earlier, if uh they remove the property taxes, it will devastate not only public schools, but also the police, fire departments, and county government that are all paid for by property taxes. So I urge anyone who can hear my voice to please call your representatives and tell them to do the right thing by our community and by our children. I know uh, nobody really likes paying property taxes, but if we don't have some way of funding our schools, what is gonna happen to our society? So um I urge you to call uh Governor Mike DeWine, Nathan Manning, and Kelly Dieter, who are our representatives. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions? Next, anyone else have a, an update?
Um, the endowment board hasn't met yet, but I just wanted to remind all the teachers and staff that the endowment board grants are due on Friday, um, October third, which is just in a couple of days. So um, get those in so we can give you money for your wonderful projects.
Uh, so for the JVS update, Anne sent um a brief email saying there wasn't really much to report from their board meeting, except that they got a five-star report card, um, and that she was thankful that Dr. Hall provided a helmet. I guess they had helmets that are being represented from all of the thirteen districts, and we didn't have one there yet. So now they have ours. So that was the update for that. And then a brief update for the Town and Gown Committee, uh, we met two weeks ago, I think it was, or maybe a little longer than that. And we talked about uh our State of the City address that we've done each year. It almost slipped by us without getting scheduled, but it looks like we have a date of October twenty-third. It'll be from six to seven PM, it'll be right here at the elementary school in the um auditorium slash gym, gym. So, uh, we had a really good turnout last year, lots of great questions, great representation from the city, the college, and the school district. And so hopefully folks will come out for that. Do we have a meeting before, we do not have a meeting before then, do we? So that's, that's the notice that I can give you in a school board meeting. We will definitely be advertising it, posting it on social media, websites, and all of that good stuff.
Did you say six to seven, Farah?
Six to seven.
Six to seven.
October twenty-third. That's all that, I mean, we talked about other things, we're, we're constantly talking about the shifting landscape as far as the law is concerned. But other than that, that was kind of the biggest news. So now, anybody else have an update? I don't believe so. Okay. So next we have hearing of the public on other items, and we did have at least one person, we might have another person sign up for more. And we will, so what happens here is I'll call your name, come up to the mic, you have three minutes to talk. Before you start speaking, I would just ask that you state your name and your address, and then you are welcome to talk. And we have Jake Kessler. Well, and please direct your comments to the board, that's all.
And you probably need to turn that back on.
Maybe?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Jake Kessler, four sixty East College, um, a parent in the district. Also happen to have a uniform company, and I wanted to uh talk about the rebranding RFP for just a couple of minutes and make a suggestion. So I was invited on a call with a group called the Impact Group five months ago. And they gave a pretty, I don't know, templated presentation on their offering. And that is effectively mirrored in that RFP, uh, including the cost that they had presented that day. And so, you know, I, I wanna make sure, I guess, that this RFP isn't just being used as due diligence. Because I do think that there are some opportunities that are being really missed in dealing with this, that uh, you know, I don't wanna raise a problem without a solution. So, uh, my understanding heading into that call was that we're still gonna remain the Phoenix. We're still keeping our script identity, we're still keeping the O, we're still keeping that particular Phoenix. Obviously, the implications on facilities and things like that, we're keeping the color scheme. So, in the end, uh, we've just purchased a mascot, I noticed at the homecoming game. There was a Phoenix running around, I don't know where that came from. It's old?
It's old.
Put some pupils on it and make it new. So anyway, um, in the end, what that really comes down to is perhaps an alternate logo and some like branding items for letterhead, business cards, et cetera, that's mentioned within that RFP, right? So the first thing, alternate logo. If that's something that you guys want, I'm gonna show you what I did in forty-five seconds on ChatGPT. By saying, make a simple logo for a team called the Phoenix, the colors are red, white, and navy. This took forty-five seconds, this cost zero dollars. I think you guys should probably look into that before paying somebody else to do that. In addition, wherever you purchase your letterhead or business cards from, right? You can probably create templates that can be shared, that can be used over and over again if your idea is to create consistency on those things. As it comes to a branding guide with a PDF, I have two suggestions. One is to not spend twenty thousand dollars on a PDF. The second is to look into the business school perhaps, uh, as there are projects that students are doing to do exactly this type of thing, free of charge, uh, or pay them for a couple of hours of the time that it would, would take to do that. But, but my uh recommendation is to not spend twenty thousand dollars on this yet and to probably take this at least eighty percent of the way for free before even doing that. I mean, even within our own schools as we talk, we can have kids look into just helping design these things as well, right? Like to have some personal civic pride in being like, oh, you know, little, little Jenny like designed our business cards, right? There's, 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 there's value to that. So, um, I just, I, I, I was a part of that meeting, um, I know that they were recommended from another place. I was pretty shocked that they would be taken seriously when they didn't really provide any sort of customization, proof of their work. They told the committee to go online and look at it if they wanna see something. I, I don't, you know, so that's, that's my recommendation, is that we put that money potentially into other things, as we're talking about how scarce money is. If it takes a few minutes on something like this to create something that, uh, you know, can be more unique and, and, you know, work for our district, then I think that we should do that. I'm happy to help, I've offered to help previously, but as somebody who does these things and makes uniforms within the district, right? Keeping consistency in the color. Keeping consistency in the colors of the things that I do, and the fonts and the, and the things that I do, right? Those are just part of the job, right? So, um, I hope that we can have a little more consistency within the athletic director role, which will help create some consistency over time with some of these things, and that we don't just hope that, like, a PDF is gonna save us. And I think that spending twenty grand for a couple hours of busy work is probably not the best idea. So, my recommendation would be to have that committee look into alternatives, uh, because we may not be in the same, uh, situation that the other school districts were that recommended that particular firm. So, that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, just to, uh, Mr. Kessler's point, uh, it was my understanding that we were putting together a committee to address this. And I, I don't know that Dr. Hall knew that we were gonna have this question today, so I don't think you're prepared to, um, share anything with us. But I would ask that if we could, at the next school board meeting, just get an update on what is going on with our, our branding? And if there is a committee, and have we chosen anybody yet, and all that good stuff, so.
I'll give you a brief update.
Sure.
Um, we do have a committee, our communications committee. We sent out a RFP, so we're soliciting, um, proposals for that, like, you know, like, same thing with Architect. There'll be an interview committee that will go through it. The same thing with, like, Architect, they have a rubric. Then they have to be selected from that. They'll do presentations, whoever the first three or so will have. Then they'll do a presentation piece for it. Um, and then we'll see what they have for the best presentations, um, and go through it. So, it is a committee, a communications committee that's developed, um, to view that information. We're looking at, um, the branding piece of, to have a common Phoenix, and also owning a logo, so that logo can be, um, placed anywhere. And we don't have to worry about, um, rights or anything else like that, um, as well. So, our communications committee is actually looking at that piece. But we certainly, I think, um, the discussion is on there. We certainly will take his advice and his actual license expertise, too. No final decision has been made on any firm whatsoever. We're still, um, in the process of getting RFPs from different companies. I was posting on our website, too.
Thank you.
As a side, I, I was specifically called the next day and told that they were selected. So, I just wanna make sure that that communication is consistent. Um, that's part of why I'm here today is with that. I went to this meeting and I was called the next day.
So, just one second, because we have, we have rules, and we also have people who wanna be able to hear what you're saying. So, your, your point was that you were told that that company that you referenced in your remarks was hired to do this work?
Selected.
Selected?
Yes.
By somebody that works in the district?
By the committee, yes.
Oh, okay.
In order for them to be, uh, they have to go through the board, be approved by the board, too. So, it's not, but I'll, I can talk to you later if you ever wanna help you to.
And we can, I mean, I would ask, one, I mean, in general, we, we can't talk like this way when we're discussing stuff for a school board meeting. You're either at the microphone and talking or not, but we're happy to get more information and be able to report in more detail at the next school board meeting, 'cause we, you know, this is on the fly. So, thank you. Thank you for your comments and your concerns. All right, so, we are now, okay, so, future meetings, October twenty-eighth. We are gonna do our Oberlin Elementary School and Oberlin High School tours. Our tour will be at five P M. Our regular meeting will be at six P M, the normal time, and it'll be here at Oberlin Elementary School. And then on November twenty-fifth, we will do our Langston Middle School tour at five thirty P M. And then the meeting will start at the regular meeting time, six P M, and it will be at Langston Middle School. Um, I will entertain, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'll entertain a motion, ooh, one more thing.
Yes, we talked about having some, um, special sessions for the report card and also one for the self-assessment to review our calendars. And we run out of months.
We're running out of months. Yes, so, you said, is that two sessions or we're trying to do one?
I think that's up to the board, if you like. Um, I know we have a self, self-assessment, um, results. That's gonna take a couple hours. And we wanted to more in-depth, um, presentation on the report card, unless this was sufficient. That's up to the board.
Yeah, I, I feel like we talked about having something more in-depth, but I don't know if anybody feels like we need more in-depth on the report card than we do. Not that we don't love your presentation.
It was excellent. It was excellent. I mean, I think it got, it got pretty in-depth. But, so, let's start with the report card. Do we feel like we've received enough information, or is there something more that we wanna dive into?
I think I'm good.
Yeah, I am, too.
I think I'm good, and Misha is normally at these meetings, and if we need to ask her something, then we can do that.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, so then we don't have to do a special session for the report card. Thank you mu- so much, Ms. Baker. And then for the self-assessment, we just need to pick a date, 'cause we would like to do that with this current board, um, before everything's changed, so. So, um, thank you for remembering that, Dr. Hall.
Right, so we discussed not doing October because it's too soon and too busy and.
So, that's, that's in November?
Yeah, so that gets us into November.
And the way it's looking, it probably gonna have to be early November before this other meeting. Cause then we get into.
Before the, the twenty.
Maybe before the twenty-fifth, or is that?
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Right, so.
Cause everybody's.
Yeah, the fourth is Election Day, which I don't think we should do.
Please, no.
Yeah, the eleventh is Veterans Day, which I don't think we should do. And the eighteenth is the day that those of us that are going to the conference get back from. So, is there a day besides Tuesdays that works?
Does Wednesday work? I'm just gonna jump in, 'cause there are regular meetings that are always set on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, not so much on Wednesdays.
Is there anything saying that we can't do it on a Wednesday?
We can do it whenever we want.
Yeah.
Okay, Wednesday works.
What day? What Wednesday?
Wednesday, which Wednesday?
Do we wanna do Wednesday, the twelfth?
I have an O, O S C meeting on that day.
Oh, you have a regular meeting that day, okay.
Yeah.
And is that, um. Just like that specific Wednesday of the month?
Or is it every Wednesday?
It's not, it's just that day, that Wednesday.
So, you can go a week ahead or a week behind?
You can go the nineteenth.
Well, it's just the week before.
Or the fifth.
Yeah, either of tho- either of those work for me.
I, I can't do the fifth.
Okay.
So, I mean, the nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
Yeah, that's what it is. Okay, so nineteenth at six o'clock? Okay.
And Dr. Hall, we'll get information about.
You said six?
Six P M, yeah, regular. Oh, is there something that day?
There's a. Here connection right here, but I think we'll, yeah, we should, we should be okay. We'll be fine. I'll check with our consultant to see if she's available during that day, too. I'm not sure if we wanna pick another.
Pick an alternate?
Yes.
The Thursday?
Thursday, the twentieth?
Thursday, the twentieth?
Would the thirteenth work?
I can't do the thirteenth.
There's something that, cause I'm meeting.
Oh, that's the eighth grade spaghetti dinner.
Oh, no.
So, do we want Thursday, the twentieth, as our alternate? The day Wicked Part Two comes out?
What? What comes out?
It's on my calendar?
What comes out?
Wicked Part Two.
Oh, okay.
Thursday, the twentieth? Anybody have a conflict with that day?
No.
Okay, well, then that'll be our alternative.
Okay. Email her tonight. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson White? Ms. Gadsden? Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Semeca?
Yes, we are adjourned.